So I went to a blank corner of the house.
Okay, so let's get started. Okay, if we're ready here, it's four oh one. So welcome, welcome everyone to the first meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley.
You cannot scooch things out of your.
This calendar year. I'm glad everybody's here. So Amy, I'm not sure if anybody has, I'll call the meeting to order and the first thing order of business is public comment regarding the closed session items. Any?
Toward your cabinet and you'll only touch.
Sorry, there's somebody in the background and I'm not sure who that is. Um, no, there are no raised hands for closed session items.
Okay, so if there are, there's no request for speaking on closed session items. I will adjourn us here and we will retire to closed session and we'll open again at five o'clock. So thank you all. And I'll see you on the other side. Sir, so welcome to everybody to the first meeting of the Board of Education of this calendar year. Hope everybody had a terrific holiday and got back to school. Okay, and that things are going well. My first time running this meeting, um, in a virtual sense, I'll try to do as good as Lavender did last year. I think she did a wonderful job of being able to bring people in and out to speak and keep the meetings moving. So I'll try to emulate her as best I can here. So we will begin the meeting with our pledge of allegiance and Shane, would you be leading us in that, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Shane. Uh, the board took no action during closed session tonight. The next item on our list is approval of the agenda. I believe there are amended personnel and purchase order reports. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No, that's it. First name.
I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Lavender. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much, Michael. Um, we have a new rule, new law this year that we have to have a roll call vote on every vote that we take. So we'll begin with Shane, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Lavender?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. So that's five to zero. The motion passes and the agenda is approved. Trustee Kuziak, will you please read our mission statement?
Oh. Sorry, let me, sorry. It's the screen and it's me trying to find the pulling up the agenda. I apologize.
Okay.
Um. Okay. I am right there. Okay. Okay, I apologize. I'm just looking for our mission statement right here. I'm just going to it.
You want me to do this for you, Michael?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, sorry, my, yes, please. I.
Yeah.
Please.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Sorry.
So we'll move on to public comment. Uh, the board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must raise your hand during the start of the agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the raise your hand button and to comment by phone uh, by pressing star nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. We go through this at each meeting because we are under the Brown Act, which guarantees open government in California. And those are the ground rules that we have to work under with the Brown Act. So now we're down to the student board member report. Shane, how are things going?
Well, we have a few things going on that are really great in our community, more of just getting back into the flow of things because we're coming back from break. Um, our ASP at the high school is working together to put our virtual assembly on this month. The high school is preparing for Sauce Pop, which is a ten week period celebrating diversity through student led activities. Eighth grade parent night is later this month. The high school is working with the middle schools to organize for that event. Canyon and the high school has held multiple fundraisers at local restaurants. And on the eighteenth, CBUSD is hosting a special celebration in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Okay, so is that it? Great. Thank you, Shane. Uh, moving right on to the next agenda item, the school report. We're happy tonight to welcome Marshall Elementary School, Arvind.
Yes, welcome. Um, I, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Ivana Rogers, who's going to take us through this. It's exciting to have, um, to have her, um, do this presentation for Marshall, an outstanding school. So whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Amati. Um, I'm Ivana Rogers, Principal Marshall Elementary School. Um, I'll be presenting with Ms. Lason, kindergarten teacher and Ms. Green Creel, fourth grade teacher. I'm very excited to share the wonderful things Marshall is continuing to do to build commuting community and connection during these uncertain times. Uh, next slide, please. Our focus for this school year is community, community and connection. Our presentation will show how each grade level or classroom has created connection and community for their students and how the whole school community has created connection and community together. This quotation sums up what our focus has been this school year. This year, I will cultivate the art of making connections and recognize how I can contribute and contribute to the happiness of others. Next slide, please. And Ms. Lason, please take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Um, our kindergarten team has written a short statement here and you can see um, all the pictures and works that our students have done. And this is purely through through fully online through Class Dojo, through Zoom. And so in our kindergarten community, we've created a class dojo for our students and families to stay connected. And so in our theme of community and connectedness, even at the earliest stages, technology has kept our community together, even at the very, very early start of our students' academic careers. And by starting this connection early and often, daily, weekly, through art, through reading alouds, through our math projects, through everything else that we're doing over the computer, we are building and strengthening our Marshall community for years to come. Next slide, please. And this tradition of um, community and connectedness continues into the first grade through classroom mascots such as um, a stuffed turtle named Sheldon, who is seen all around the community with each of the teachers and our team, putting him in different scenarios so that the students can guess um, where he has been and through that build a connection, not just in an academic, in an academic setting, but in a more informal setting that helps to build their socialization, which unfortunately is compromised under the distance learning guise. So furthermore, more of these informal and formal conversations continue with star, star students, lunch bunch activities, and of course, in the classroom, reading multicultural books, um, investigating the different cultures within each classrooms and simply celebrating um, each student successes. Next slide, please. And in the second grade, this, our connectedness further strengthens really through all the online platforms that we have been afforded through CSO, through Zoom, Google Classroom, Flipgrid, Padlet, the list goes on and on. And it, if in our second grade team has formalized these, um, this this mode of connectedness through family connection, not just reaching and not just reaching the individual student, but getting to know them and where they come from. Daily through morning meeting through our SEL check-ins, built, community building activities through collaborative technology where students continue to work together even though they're apart. And again, as we saw with our first grade team, again, lunch bunch, socialization, especially at these early grades is so critical and community is strengthened through all of this. And so keeping unstructured playtime as much as we can has been integral to our students' connectedness and to further developing our Marshall community at the lower grades. Next slide, and now I hand this over to Ms. Green Creel.
Hi, I'm here representing upper grades at Marshall Elementary and we continue the theme that you're seeing that teachers are leveraging the technology we have to break through that just screen and connect with our students individually. They're doing some really wonderful things in the third grade using slides and collaborative apps like Flipgrid and Padlet to have the, not just the students, but the families feel connected. You can read through all of this. It's almost too much to take in right now. But they're using that, that technology so to make sure that students feel seen, that they are again, that we're connected to our schools and that they are, they're acknowledged for their strengths and their successes. Next slide, slide, please. Fourth grade, same story. I'm a fourth grade teacher, so I know a lot about this one. Something that we learned from the spring is that, that's the whole class of having little screens like the Brady Bunch wasn't always the best way for us to be together. So we created something called class houses. We broke our groups into smaller groups, so they had somebody to connect with at all times. We have different challenges with our SEL, with our art, with our STEM. And here are a representation of some of the projects that we've done together to make sure that those students not only feel connected to us, the teacher, but then to other students as well. Some of the same things that you see with the other grade levels, we have Friday's clubs though, so these are student led clubs. I'm telling you, among us is really popular right now. Um, but also the, using the district SEL curriculum, STEM art, and recess opportunities as well. Please, next slide. And fifth grade, they take their role as gatekeepers to middle school very seriously. So they are very focused on their academic content, but also making those students feel seen and acknowledged. So they have built in expectations for online learning. They have their SEL that they're using using every day, communication with parents, but all bringing in those times, we're bringing collaboration with multicultural read alouds and art activities. Continuing with our Aven, it's definitely in there all the time and our discussions that related to our SEL content. Next slide, please. Back to Maria.
Yes. And as a culminating factor, um, in our school community is our K through five special day class. And you can see students of all grade levels, K two, our K two SDC class, three to five SDC class, continue to utilize technology to further create and deepen those connections, not just within the classroom, but expanding into the greater community. In the through two, K through second grade class, students are guided in having conversations about their worlds, using not just academic content, but more informal content, again, to build on play and socialization. And then in three, five SDC, the same technology platforms that we see in our general education, classes are used, Jamboard, Zoom, all of these things are used to, to push forward conversations about diversity and where we are from in the classroom and in our world. Next slide, please. Okay, and I also have the honor of recognizing one of our outstanding students at Marshall Elementary. I personally had the honor of teaching her, um, as a, as one of the team members in our kindergarten team. She was in um, Mrs. Horace's class at that time. And just to see her growth all the way to fifth grade. And so our young lady's name is Olive Wiggand, and I will read what her teachers have written about her. The faculty of Marshall Elementary are pleased to honor Olive Wiggand as our outstanding fifth grade student. Olive exemplifies what it means to be an extraordinary student. Olive's work is always done to the best of her ability and she is not satisfied with just getting her work done. She wants it done well. She works hard at being a student and demonstrating the skills of being independent, driven, and taking initiative. She can always be counted on to be a leader in her class, but her academic prowess is not even the best thing about her. Olive's capability to show empathy and kindness towards others is unparalleled from a student of her age. She is wise beyond her years. Olive is incredibly well-liked by her peers and all of the staff at Marshall. She cares about all students, not just the ones in her class. We are proud to Olive, to honor Olive Wiggan tonight as being a perfect role model for her grade level peers and the younger students at Marshall. She embodies Marshall's avid pledge, which is, I pledge to dream big, work hard, and be strong. Go Ma, go Mustangs. And again, as a teacher who has seen her growth from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade, even as a little kindergartner, she has had the biggest heart of gold and her, she just exudes grace, kindness, and maturity. And we are just so proud and honored to recognize her tonight. Next slide, please.
And I get to continue gushing about the wonderful people that make up Marshall. Our parent volunteer that we're recognizing is Alicia Blum. Alicia Blum is one of the most amazing people. I'm going to read what they wrote, but I, I could go on for hours on this one. Um, well, what can we say about this person? Alicia Blum has contributed to our school in so many ways. She's there for everything and anything, from helping with the musical and the Castro Valley Light Parade to helping with the walkathon, reading with small groups of students and planning classroom crafts and celebrations. Alicia is passionate about creating one cohesive, engaged Marshall community. She's always willing to volunteer and step in where needed. Alicia is an essential part of our PTA and all the activities that come with that responsibility. Alicia is currently our executive vice president, but has also served as outreach coordinator that took on the programs like Adopt a Family, Coat and Food Drives, not to mention her outstanding baking skills resulting in delicious treats for all. Seriously, they are legit. Alicia is a ray of sunshine who welcomes people into our community. It is an honor to call her our colleague and wonderful friend. Next slide, please.
Right. All right, back to me. So, um, one of the parts of our school that's really focused on um, connectedness and community is also our library. Um, so the Marshall Library, through the dedication of our Marshall librarian, has continued to have virtual programs for students from curbside library, um, book checkout to our after-school coding programs. The library has continued to grow the collection of diverse books with a grant from CBUSD to purchase more diverse titles. The Marshall Library website has a variety of different ways for students to be connected with online story time, ebooks, online learning apps, and different virtual experiences. Next slide, please. The Marshall PTA has been very supportive and involved in the school community. The PT, the Marshall PTA has continued to be a constant, um, constant in support the students and staff of Marshall. From the beginning of the pandemic, the Marshall PTA, um, sorry, I lost my place. From the beginning of the pandemic, the Marshall PTA supported our Castro Valley community with food donations from April to August, August. Over, um, seven thousand boxes of fresh produce and two thousand bags of groceries were prepared, uh, with prepared meals were given away. At the start of this school year, the PTA gave all students who wanted them headphones to use during distance learning. The PTA switched gears quickly at the start of the school year and presented staff with mini grants to support um, them with items needed for distance learning. The PTA continued our annual fundraiser, which was a walkathon this year, and the school community raised over twenty-six thousand dollars. The PTA also assisted in the relative parent support groups, which has helped parents feel connected during this time. Next slide, please. As a school site, we are continuing to move forward. With students and staff, we are working to create a new mural for our site to show the current culture and how our school is an avid school. In conjunction with the Marshall PTA, we have created parent support groups to support parents too during these times and have them build commuting, community and connection. PBAS, um, is still being practiced during distance learning and online badges are given to students for following the Mustang mark. Avid strategies are still being used during distance learning. Some of the strategies used are Cornell two column notes, math one pagers, word problem collaboration, and flip good videos to share reflective ideas. Avid badges are being given out to students as well during distance learning. Next slide, please. Thank you to the board and the superintendent for allowing us to share about Marshall Elementary School.
Well, Ms. Rogers, thank you to you and your staff who are here tonight. And congratulations to Olive and Alicia for their recognition there. I really liked that little picture of Olive there with her arms crossed. She looked like she's ready to go to college already, almost. That's a very nice little photograph. So I was wondering if the, do board members have any comments they'd like to make? I'll start with Lavender, perhaps.
Thank you, Gary. I just want to thank, um, Principal Rogers, Ms. Lason, and Ms. Green Creel for coming out and presenting us. Again, this is one of our favorite is when schools come and speak to us. And I just have to say, I really appreciate your, your theme is con, connection and community. Right now, we all need this more than ever. And I love how you leave it in by grade. It's a continual step in development for those children. And that's great, but it goes beyond that, how you're connecting groups together, how you're working with parents and how the parents are doing such great things for the community. So I just wanted to thank you for all that you're doing in these rough times for everyone. Really appreciate it. And I do want to send a big shout out and congratulations to Olive. Um, it especially struck me how she's so empathy, she has empathy and she's so kind. I'm sure that's also helping her peers right now and everyone's time of need. And lastly, but especially not, or, uh, and last, I want to thank Alicia. She does a lot. Um, as vice president for the PTA and it's evident in all the things that the PTA is doing. I just want to thank her for everything that she does. Um, it really takes all of us to make this a great, uh, school district and she's a part of it and we want to thank her for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Lavender. Dolly, I saw your hand.
Yes. Um, so I really want to thank Principal Rogers. That was a wonderful presentation and also to Maria and Suzanne for presenting very well. I would like you to know that, um, Marshall is my home school. Like my son went, uh, started in second grade as a seven-year-old, uh, thirty-one years ago. So I know Marshall really well and my daughter went to Marshall, um, at least K through third. Um, okay, went to Marshall School also as well. So I'm very familiar with Marshall School. My daughter went to like a daycare right across the way from there, which isn't there anymore, but um, and, uh, we walk by there with the dog all the time. We're always looking and my daughter's always pointing there. There was my kindergarten. You know, down, now it has fences around it and some, some screening and stuff, but, um, I will always look at as Marshall very fondly, uh, since my kids went to, went to that school. Um, I, I congratulate, um, um, the, uh, um, Olive and Alicia, you know, congratulations for uh, being, really looks, I mean, you're right, that picture is amazing. What, you know, that student Olive, she just does look like so grown up. And, um, for any of our parents who are doing all that volunteer work in the PTA, it is so appreciated in the schools. We really, it's so wonderful to have parents that do things like that. So thank you for all your work. I would love some time to maybe, uh, get the stuffed turtle, Sheldon, and take some pictures with him, you know, with my dog and walking around town and maybe walking around Marshall and stuff like that. That might be a cool thing I could do. Which I would love to. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
I just wanted to congratulate, uh, Alicia and Olive. Um, it's really great to see your Mustang spirit and, um, to be recognized um, by the school. So congratulations and to the leadership team tonight, uh, our, our friends from, um, from Marshall. I just want to thank you for the intention with which you're thinking about building community. Uh, we know it's rough right now and it's really great to see that we're, we're seeing a sense of that of what, what, what it means to be a Mustang, even, um, if we might be at home um, in, in other spaces doing this. Uh, I hope that this can help all of us. Um, when we would get back together in real life, you know, how we think about community. And, um, I just want to thank you for doing all this hard work. Uh, I don't know if we can say it enough. Um, I want to recognize all of you, um, for putting in the extra work. We know that everyone is going the extra mile right now uh, to keep things together. And thank you. Thank you for that. And it really shows tonight. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mike. Vice President Dot?
Thank you, Gary. Um, thank you, Ms. Rogers, for coming and presenting to us and to, uh, Ms. Lason and Ms. Green Creel. Um, I really appreciated hearing about your program and I'm especially hardened to, or hardened, not hard, um, to hear how you've interspersed the importance of diversity um, and inclusion in, in all that you're doing with creating connectedness. Um, with everything that we've experienced last year, I think, and, and last week, um, I think it's so important to, um, continue to, uh, um, nurture acceptance and, um, inclusion in the diverse students that we have. Thank you very much for that work.
Thank you, Dot. Shane, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to say first, thank you so much for putting together this amazing presentation. It always amazes me how well specifically elementary school students are able to navigate these online sources. Like I know for myself and everyone who I've talked to in high school, I still have trouble with it. So the fact that you've been able to build those connections between students and teachers is really amazing. So thank you for sharing that with us.
It's great. Arvind? All right, you're muted right now.
Muted. I said Shane reminded me of really the importance of, you know, sometimes you, you get thrown into something and you're trying to just kind of swim and get, you know, to the, wherever you're safe, but there, you just reminded me of how different things will be when these kids are actually older and in high school because of what they've been able to do. Again, the unintended positive consequence of a bad situation. So that's, I appreciate that. I want to say, you know, Ms. Lason talked about connection, um, and Ms. Green as well. And when they were saying that technology has kept us connected, I want to say it's the technology, but it's you. It's really what you do, what you plan, and all of the things that you do. And I want to say about Marshall, this is just the way things are done at Marshall. It's, it's just avid is ingrained, the kind of work they do, connection. It's absolutely beautiful and I'm so proud of what you've been able to accomplish. It's a model school. And I want to congratulate Olive. We need more people and adults like you with empathy, empathy and kindness and just wanting to do good work. And Ms. Blum, in addition to the fact that now our parents have to do a lot more at home with their children, you're still continuing to do all of that good work and Marshall has truly benefited the entire community with their food drive and all of the things they've done. And I love the idea of the parent support group. So when it's our parent leadership council, I would love to hear more from the parents about that. But we are so fortunate to have Ivana as the principal at Marshall. I can't tell you how thrilled I am that she, um, accepted and she's there because it's just a breath of fresh air and her background, her, uh, literacy background, having worked with high school kids. Avid, it was just a perfect fit. And I know she works her heart out and works really hard. So I want to thank you, Ivana. For everything that you're doing to support everybody, your library, your, your teachers, all of you are doing a great job. Go Marshall.
Thank you, Parveen. And I'll just say bitters to all of those things. Marshall is, as Parveen said, a model school and, and I, what I've seen over the years is that they are. Well, you have a long tradition of being an innovative school, almost the beta testing site for everything that we do in the district. And you're ahead of most people in the game because of that. So it's always interesting to hear what you're up to next down there. So. Keep up the good work and once again, congratulations to Olive and Alicia for all the good work that they're doing there as well. So thank you very much for the report to all of you. Look forward to seeing you again next year and hopefully in person next year. So thanks for your report. We'll move on now to item seven or skip, excuse me, to item six, the reports from our two bargaining units. I see that Robin is on the line and Amy, can you allow, invite Robin into say a few words to us?
Thank you, President Howard.
Oh, there you are.
I just want to. Say as part of CSEA, we have had. Some busy times of late. And many of it, us are. Waiting with basically baited breath to see what the next steps going forward are going to be. The information. That will be considered this evening and or is scheduled to be considered. And the planning that has gone into that. You have my utmost respect and. Congratulations for making. So many of the things clear, seamless as possible and making the connections with the people. In the district. One things that we look forward to is what the next steps are. And how the training. And when the timing of that training for our members. Is scheduled. That's a piece of concern to some of our classified members in that they haven't received. As much information as they kind of anticipated that they should be having by now. But we, we're here to hear and learn and do and support and. Keep Castwell unified the, the great place to work that it is. So, Happy New Year from CSEA Chapter fifty-two.
Thank you, Robin. Happy New Year to you and to all your members as well. So we will, I'm sure Amy will mute you now and. Welcome in Mark Malatich. Happy New Year to you, Mark.
Happy New Year, everybody. I don't know about you guys, but this is the only year when you say Happy New Year and people kind of look at you like you're crazy. What do you mean? What are you talking about? Nothing magically changed on January first. So, but you know, there's, there's definitely reasons to be hopeful and, and you know, we're, we all got to get through this. So like everybody else, our, our staff is anxious, anxious about the state of everything. Not just COVID, but politically and just everything. It's anxious times that we're living in, we all know. And we are hopeful with the vaccine that things can hopefully get back to normal sooner rather than later. But there's also that uncertainty of when that will happen and how it will happen. There is no concrete plan at this point to vaccinate the teachers in Alameda County. And there does seem to be some need for at least some type of a central rollout system. That seems to be most effective. So if the goal is to really, you know, open up our schools, that's a priority. Getting our teachers vaccinated is super important. So we're hopeful that that will happen soon. Also, we are very close to. Getting a contract settled hopefully. We are pretty close to T-Aang. There's some issues that are out of our control that we're waiting on. But once that happens, we're hopeful that we can do that. And I can't thank our bargaining team enough. They bargained all summer long. We took off a very stressful September when we were kind of adjusting to everything and then jumped right back into it in October. Once we get this done, we'll, we'll open up our whole contract in March and bargain again. So it's just this nonstop thing. But we're going to get there and we really are thankful for your caution. We think we're thankful. That, you know, you are taking this very seriously. Not all districts are. We have friends that, that live in other districts and they are having a really awful time. With opening and then shutting and it's, it's just terrible. So thank you for your caution. And you know, again, Happy New Year and thank you for the support. We definitely have to support each other and. Yeah. So have a good evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mark. So Amy, we're down to public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who has asked to speak? I can't actually see those.
Oh, we have no raised hands for items not on the agenda.
Okay. In that case, we're going to take a short break here, a five minute break. It's now six oh six. So we'll be back in, in six eleven. Okay. So we'll take that short break. Thanks very much. Okay, we are all back. Thank you very much. So we're down to item number nine, the consent agenda. This is an action item.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Lavender.
I will second that.
Thank you, Dolly. So moved in second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll move into the voting. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Cusack?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Vice President Theodore?
All right, yes.
And I'll vote yes. So that's five to zero. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item ten, reports, discussions and action items. The first one is the personnel report. This is an action item.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended, or not the agenda, I'm sorry, the personnel report as amended.
Thank you, Lavender. Thank you, Dot. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the personnel report? Lavender?
If, if you'll notice on the personnel report, we do have. A retiree that joined us earlier today. Just wanted to thank Rob and thank for her service.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, that is great and a bit unusual, but we're really happy to have her continue in her role as president of the union. So thanks for making that comment, Lavender. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. This is a personnel item. So we'll start with trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Cusack?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Vice President Theodore?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and that makes it five to zero to approve the personnel report. On down to item B.
Yeah.
Parveen, look forward to hearing this.
So Amy's going to share. The presentation. I want to, I want to start by saying, I know that everyone is anxious and I'm going to go through a lot of information tonight. And you know, the presentation will be available, but we're always, you know, here to answer any questions. So before we get started, if you remember, I know all of us remember. That our phased reopening would have, was planned to start on February first. That was predicated on the fact that we should be in red. Two weeks before that, and that would have been January eleventh. And if any of you have, for all of you who have paid attention, I'm sure you've read, you've checked. You know, websites at the county, we did not make it. Therefore, I'll just start by saying that that date needs to be further out. Until we actually have been in red for two weeks. Right now. Things are starting, I hear, to stabilize, but we still have over forty cases per hundred thousand and that's far from seven per hundred thousand. And so, next slide, just wanted to kind of say that first off. Again, we always put this in here for everybody to know where we are. We're in purple. Widespread, you know, infection and, and transmission. Next slide. This is where it shows where, you know, that just the trend for a seven day average per hundred thousand for Alameda County. I'm still going up, but, but not as sharply as it was, but it's not good. We're deep in purple. Next. So our roadmap to reopening and safety plan was actually submitted to Alameda County and lots of good work that went into that. And I want to thank everybody who was a part of it. We turned it in on December sixteenth. We received information on the twenty-second that our plan is good to go. It's complete and they have also posted it. On their website. It's posted on our website. And we also have our supplemental school site, specific reopening plans. We checked those before I actually sent the actual district one over to the county. So. You know, I, I know that. Our principals and staff here at the district office as well worked really, really hard. Our administrators. Worked really hard on getting that done to make sure it's covering everything. Preparation continues at each school site and district wide, and I'm really glad that Robin actually mentioned training. And so you know, when people say, well, we're not opening yet for another, you know, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, five weeks, whatever, depending on what happens. And why are we sending information? Why are we practicing? It's exactly for what Robin said. It's because we want to be ready. And I have to say, our administrators have put together a really great plan. They're sending things home. They're practicing. They're making videos. So it will happen and continue to, to get, you know, you'll get more and more information as we get closer, but we do have all of this in place. And asymptomatic testing for staff that are onsite with curative continues. County is working on additional vendors for school districts to utilize as well because as we start expanding testing. We do need to have, you know, our option, we, I know that there. There may be questions about like one company versus another, but we, we have had confirmation that. We can continue to use creative, but also look for other vendors. But for every district to go and out and find a vendor is really not effective. So I really want to thank our county. Office of Education, that's been absolutely instrumental in, in really supporting us throughout this whole process, not just for testing, but just. Since the, since COVID started. And so they're looking at more of that, especially as we. You know, start and talk about student testing. And, you know, again, it's for asymptomatic individuals. Once somebody is symptomatic, they immediately get tested. That's different. What we are doing is surveillance testing. So with that, I also want to say that I, I, I will go over a little bit further about vaccination as well. So. We're working on making sure we have everything in place. And next. So we have all of this ready and then the governor's plan appears. So. The, just a few points of clarification. Basically, on December thirtieth, as you know, Governor Newsom announced California Safe Schools for All Plan. That creates a pathway for school districts to physically reopen while also prioritizing the health. And safety of our students, teachers and staff. And there is pending litigation. This is pending litigation because a part of it. Is actually done, but there are pieces of it that the legislators are still kind of vetting and looking at and the governor is working on. So that's why what I'm sharing with you today is the information we have up to this minute. And some of this might change or get more clarified. So there are four pillars. One is funding. Two, safety and mitigation plan. Three is oversight and assistance and four is transparency and accountability. What's really interesting is when I meet with superintendents throughout the state, sometimes you hear from one county versus another, one. Part of the state versus another, that there are maybe counties or districts that don't have real many reopening plans, but Alameda County has actually. Fourteen out of eighteen districts in Alameda County have a reopening. And that's, that's awesome. So we have our reopening plan. So how is that different that what the governor is talking about? So let me talk about funding first. So the budget that he is proposing. Two billion dollars for the safe opening, reopening of schools beginning in February. Because that's the goal to, to start opening schools with a priority for returning the youngest children first TK two. Now that doesn't mean all TK two come in all at the same time, but we're supposed to start from the youngest children. And those who are most disproportionately, disproportionately impacted first. And then returning other grade levels to in-person instruction through the spring. And as far as that, I'll go into the funding a little bit later. Safety and mitigation plan. So there needs to be testing in place, PPE. And we have all of the, the equipment that we need. Contact tracing, we're getting really good at that. And we've been trained well and we constantly use that. Vaccination is another piece. So as you heard, the state is rolling this out. The county is going to, is working on rolling it out. At this point, educators are next in line. After the first phase and I am hearing, I mean, there are times where you hear. You know, later in February, early in February, but I think it'll be sooner than that. I, I am hoping from what I'm hearing. In different venues that we will, it will get started soon, hopefully. And I think this is where we really can be instrumental as school districts. I did bring it up today. When we had one meeting with the county and on Friday with another group. That as school districts, we can really be instrumental. We have flu vaccine clinics. And so hopefully we'll get to a point where we can actually be helpful in creating that, that opportunity. And I also have contacted the healthcare provider around here. The hospital to see if there's a possibility because oftentimes if, you know, when it came to testing and I asked. Even they, they're busy. They've got their, you know, they have patients, their ICU is, is full. But that doesn't mean that that can't be done on our school sites. In fact, I think at some point in the future. If there is a vaccine for students, right now there is no vaccine for children. It's for adults. And the vaccine that we, that they're talking about, but at some point, if it gets to that point where students are. Just like polio, we used to do that in, in schools, absolutely with parent permission. So we'll be very creative in finding ways to get back people vaccinated as soon as possible. And I know. That I think we have one board member who's actually doing a little bit of that already. It can, can be helpful as well. So oversight and, and assistance. You know, they, the, the goal is to make sure that, that people are actually, everything, everyone is held accountable. The safety plans are in place. And that they have actually put together a cross-agency team. And I forget the name of the doctor in San Francisco who we actually had presenting a few times at UCSF. She's working at the head of it. Um, she's working at the head of it um, to for oversight. Their transparency and accountability is there will be a state dashboard that enables all Californians to see their schools reopening. You already see ours, we've already posted it, but you will see, um, and then level of uh, funding, there will be data on school transmission. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that for our um, own district. Next. So the governor's plan again, um, is grades K six may open, and there are two pieces to it. One is mandatory, so whether we, e- every school district has to have a reopening plan or a safety plan. The safety plan that the state is talking about is our reopening plan, which should include the um, illness prevention plan and information and requirements from OSHA. What I'm happy to say is the county has done a really great job doing a crosswalk between the reopening plans for the count that we have put together and what the state requires. And instead of writing a whole new plan for maybe some other districts or counties have to do that. But for us, we just have to make sure we have those two um, elements in it. And fortunately, we already do, and we would just have links. So we would then post that, we've already posted it here, but there's also somewhere on the state website that we are going to be able to post our plan. So that's okay. So that's for every district. Now there's an optional piece. The optional piece is if a district wants to participate in the incentive grant, that two billion dollars that I talked about. So districts can apply for that by February first, and it's four hundred fifty dollars per ADA for Kate, for your whole district. If you open, if you turn in your plan or you apply by February first, or by March first, then it goes down a little bit, twenty-five percent actually, not a little bit. Um, but in order to do that, a piece of it is that we have to provide continuous in-person instruction through the end of the school year, meaning that right now, our goal and our uh, what we are doing is being open only in red. You can be, according to their plan, you can be open all the way up to even if you have twenty-eight per hundred thousand dollars, which is in purple. And um, we are not planning on opening or keeping our schools open in purple. Therefore, that's kind of the clarification we need to get to see if we would still qualify at this point. We wouldn't necessarily qualify unless we continue, even if we go into purple. My hope is that we, you know, things are getting better, and at some point, you know, um, even in red, even school districts that that open in red, at some point, you may have to close a classroom or a school. There, all of that is delineated in our plan. Um, and it's all based on OSHA requirements of a- and the Health Department of when to close, when to. So that's the incentive grant. My in uh, what I'm hearing from most school districts. Um, and again, uh, like there were forty different school districts on Friday that we met with, not in Alameda County. But almost everybody is really having a hard time understanding how they could do this, ha- take advantage of the incentive grant. The other piece of concern for us is that that two billion dollars, we wouldn't, would not want it to be from Prop ninety-eight. Because that, then that means there's less for Prop ninety-eight. So that's the piece that's still kind of being worked on um, uh, at the legislative level. Um, that clarification and those kinds of things. We're going to put everything in place, and we're going to hopefully apply to see if we can actually do that with what we have in place. Yes. Trustee Theodore.
Thanks, I was waiting to see if Gary was going to call on me. I I just wanted to clarify, though, we wouldn't change our minds about not opening in purple if we, even if we can't get this incentive grant. I just want to make that clear that um, our opening, our closing is not about the money, it's really about safety.
Yeah, and I I um, I'm glad you said that, and that's really where um, I think I see a lot of districts saying, I can't take advantage of this. Because, to be honest, when I hear twenty-eight per hundred thousand, that's in purple, and that doesn't make any sense. Um, so yes, our goal is to open safely and in red. Um, and that's the, that's the piece that I think is is uh, school districts are struggling with. Um, so thank you, yeah. Uh, next slide. And by the way, the money that you receive actually through the incentive grant, basically, when you really look at it, it will be completely used on the number of tests you have to do. Like, at some point, you have to do twice a week for every single person. It's almost impossible. And it basically, the 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 funds that school districts are getting, would be getting, would be mostly used for testing, and it can't be used for anything else but that and in-person instruction. So it's not like it's not earmarked. So where are we? Um, and what's next for us? County has confirmed, as you uh, have seen, our plan is complete. School-specific plans are posted on websites. Uh, thank you to schools and Amy. Um, Alameda County is currently still in purple, like we've said. Um, we have to be in red for two weeks before schools can reopen in Alameda County. Um, we're not allowed to open in purple, obviously. We will not be able to open elementary schools on February first, as we had planned, because we should have been in red by January eleventh.
Parveen?
Yes.
I think Mike had a question. Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry.
You know what? Let her continue, I'll just.
When I, when I finish this slide, please jump in. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
No worries.
Um, first phase of reopening has to be delayed until we have been in red for at least two weeks. So, basically, once we got closer to January eleven, you know, um, and we're still in purple, we just have to wait. Um, and I would say, since we already have a plan and we know what we have to do, and it has to be two weeks in red, when we turn, when we actually go into red, um, which I would, you know, imagine, maybe in a couple of weeks, we have more information. Then at each board meeting, we'll come and say, hey, we made the timeline, or we did it, um, so that we can open. But we will continue to prepare and practice, um, and make sure that when it does happen, we're ready. Um, and again, like I said, it wouldn't be all of K two together or all, so we'll talk about, we'll uh, get some clarification around that. We have a conceptual agreement with CVTA, um, I'm happy to say, for reopening elementary and are working on secondary. And a part of that conceptual agreement um, that has to do with, um, you know, student testing. Um, depending on what information we get from the uh, from the state um, and what abilities we have, um, and the funding, and also um, not opening in purple. Um, and if we open and we go into purple to close and be safe. Schools will continue to practice and prepare for reopening. We'll continue to serve our students in hubs. Um, again, I said, I am so grateful to um, our classified staff and administrators who are um, supporting these hubs. Um, but again, the students are actually not getting in-person instruction, but they are in hubs to be supported, and I appreciate that, and it's been amazing. Um, and and it's worked really um, well, a- as far as safety uh, goes. Um, and we will continue that until reopening in the hybrid. So for example, once we reopen um, elementary, let's say kindergarten or second grade or third, then those hubs will go away, because then they would be in school to be supported. Um, and get instruction, in-person instruction. Vaccination will be rolled out as soon as possible, um, as having educators uh, vaccinated is a huge priority um, for everybody. Updates and information will continue be, to be shared with families, and TK two s- two students will be first, based on governor's plan. Um, and governor's plan is being reviewed by legislators, so we'll stay informed and update um, everybody as appropriate. Mr. Kuziak.
Yeah, I ju- I just reiterate, noting that the governor has pending, a pending proposal. I think it's really critical that people hear that, that we're, we're seeing the legislative sausage-making happening before our eyes. And um, there's a huge delta between what that imagines versus what our, what our standard is in our district. And that's really key to to hear, and I also heard you talk about our commitment about um, what happens if we're in the purple. So I I want to thank you for articulating that to our community.
No, thank you. I think, you know, I uh, when I looked at the governor's plan and and you read through it, and I, I'm looking at all of the uh, different things. Um, you know, about the different phases and the summary, I I just keep thinking, we're really in a good place with our reopening plan and what we have in our district. Uh, with that, that's what we've decided to do. Um, yeah, but but just knowing that every time there's a plan uh, from when it's actually shared the first time until it actually becomes a reality, there's a lot more work that happens and a lot more just give and take and back and forth. Um, so we'll keep you, um, keep everyone informed. Next. Um, I also wanted to share with you, I want to thank Amy, Dustin, and Nick for working on this. Um, you know, talk about transparency, now this is posted, and we'll continue to update. Uh, this, uh, this is new, it's going to be on our website, we've created a COVID nineteen positive case dashboard. So that anybody can look and see where any of the cases are. I do want to say, numbers do not reflect students or staff who are on campus necessarily. So much of what we're discovering is that it's outside, somebody was somewhere else, someone was, it was transmitted that way versus at work. But we still want to list how many um, and just updated um, all the time. And last updated, January thirteen. Thank you, Amy. So I can tell you that I'm, you know, I, we, we are, they're on it. Um, I get emails from uh, Dustin all the time about any cases, positive cases that uh, that we are informed of. And that's a piece of the transparency that the governor is talking about. It's really important that people report, and it gets reported so that the Health Department has the accurate information that they need. Uh, trustee Theodore.
Um, so we haven't had any cases of on-campus or workplace spread um, despite having all of these hubs and people actually at work. So, the safety measures that that have been put into place by all of the sites have have worked.
Yes, yes, I'm very happy to uh, to say that, that that's really, you know, and and that really depends on everybody following all the rules. I also have to say, in all of my meetings that I'm attending, I am not hearing that next year, everything miraculously is going to be different. I keep hearing, even after vaccination, even when we have a lot of people vaccinated, that masking and social distancing is our new reality and will be with us for quite a while. And I'm not talking just a couple of months, I'm not talking, you know, you know, I I am, obviously, I'm not a doctor and but what I'm hearing, and and I'm sure you are hearing, is um, we'll need to do this for a while. So, good practices. The only bad thing is you can't see people smiling. Someone will come up with a see-through cloth. Next. Next slide. Um, I wanted to share a little bit about this too, because this is the federal stimulus package, um, the COVID response funding, because this all has to do with COVID. So elementary and secondary emergency relief funds that were just uh, released, established with the coronavirus um, aid relief and economic security, which is the CARES Act funding, fifty-four point three billion for K twelve, six point eight billion for California. And, you know, um, we always have to wait for Susie to do her magic with the numbers, because you can look at it and go, whoa, it's this much for us. It's actually for us, it's about a million dollars, early um, estimate. And um, when they give us these funds, they actually tell us what allowable expenditures can be. Because it is for a specific purpose, so must be spent on allowable uses. And I'm going to share with you what allowable uses. Next. So activities to address the unique needs of low-income children, both students, children with disabilities, English learner, and foster youth. Again, opening schools, getting more of these students in, staff training and professional development um, on sanitation and minimizing the spread of infection, purchasing personal protective equipment, purchasing educational technology, hardware, software connectivity for students, mental health services and support, summer learning and supplemental after-school program. And I'm going to um, tell you that our summer school planning ha- has been in the works. And it's obviously going to look very different and much expanded because of what has occurred. So um, that cost will be monumental, uh, but important. School facility repairs and improvements, if we need to improve um, or uh, change anything in our facilities inspection. So the last two bullets were actually added. The first CARES Act funding that we got did not include the last two. It didn't include school facilities repair, and it didn't include inspection or testing, so we're happy to see that. Because since um, we want to continue to test our staff, but also test our students on a, obviously, we have to have parent permission and asymptomatic, um, you know, random testing and things like that, we do need funding for that. Um, because it's not free, obviously. Um, so I'm glad to see that in here. Maintenance, repairs, replacement, and upgrades to air quality, which we've taken care of. Um, so, that's um, all I have. Um, but if the board has any questions, uh, please ask your questions, so I can try to respond. So then after that, your questions are answered, then we'll go to hear comments from the community. Yes.
I think Gary said he can't see me, so I'm just gonna, oh, okay. Um, I, you made a comment about um, vaccination clinics on our campuses. And I did work a vaccine clinic for the county yesterday, and one of the nurses worked the flu vaccine clinic that was um, at the adult school. And she said, you know, it was amazing, there was, I think, twelve hundred people vaccinated during that clinic. And if we can duplicate that, you know, on s- uh, successive days, we could vac- vaccinate a lot of people with that, that same system that they had set up. It was very useful. So they're talking about it.
Yeah, no, I'm really glad. Um, and and that was my conversation with you, saying, not only can we do that for our employees, but we can actually continue to be a place where this happens for the community. So.
Are there any other comments or questions? Yeah, let me say that uh, when the slides are up, I can only see half of you at each time, and I have to toggle back and forth. If I toggle at the wrong time, I don't see you. So I think it's best if you have a question that you just, as politely as you can, get Parveen's attention. So if there are no questions for us, we do have a few people uh, in line. I thought I saw the number three, but now I can't see it anymore. Amy, how are we doing?
We have four raised hands.
Okay, so um, we'd be glad to have those four speak. They get three minutes each. Um, and it should be on this particular topic, this agenda topic, so who do we have first? I will say that uh, Amy is going to let you in, and we will allow you to, we'll unmute you for the three minutes and then uh, listen to you, and at the end of that three minutes, remute you again.
Okay, I have first up Jessie Bick, and then after that, Ashley Washington.
Hello, Stephanie.
Okay, can you all hear me? Okay.
Uh, trustee Howard, trustee Kuziak is having issues with his internet, so he'll rejoin us. Just wanted to, you didn't.
Sure, he'll be back. Jessie, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Um, I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, I just want to appreciate, I just want to, I appreciate everyone's ongoing communal efforts to continue a successful education curriculum this school year. I know you're all doing a lot of work. And now that each of us, you know, family and everyone else has settled in somewhat as best as each of us has been able to, to this new norm of distance learning, my perception online, um, in the last few weeks has been that when and if we do, um, try to reopen to in-person sometime this school year, there will likely be two main groups of families on that day. That the hybrids are asked, uh, if we're asked to return. So call it maybe, I don't know how much it would be, but they'd both be sizable. So call it approximately half of the folks that feel that the safety measures will work and that they will comply with in-person. And then the other half that are just not willing to take the risk. Because the reality is none of our children will be vaccinated, vaccinated in the year 2021. Um, and so that's just something that, that's worrisome to a lot of us. And many of the adults connected to our community may not be vaccinated at that time as well. So in, uh, so basically in-person can't really be without risk regardless of how well everyone performs their job and follows, uh, all these well-thought-out safety protocols that you've been showing us. So for that second half of the families that aren't willing to go back, my, here's my admittedly late in-the-game proposal, uh, because it's been some months and we've all gotten used to this. Instead of the very disruptive prospect of a lot of parties, uh, to all parties involved of a lot of families attempting to maybe switch over to the hundred percent virtual option and uprooting the new norm or, you know, taking other drastic measures. Um, instead of that, perhaps with some technology assistance from a room parent or something, those families could continue virtually from home with the same teacher that would then be teaching a smaller number of kids in person at the class. So basically, probably all thought of this, but they'd have a camera and speakers and the computer and, you know, half of the kids are a good number of the kids in the school and then the other half still at home and potentially maybe all the kids could still, um, submit things to Google Classroom. So the teachers would, wouldn't have quite as much, um, jockeying to do, but, uh, when it comes to grading. Uh, I realize it would not be an ideal approach, but I thought it was worth bringing up. And it would mean less exposure of the virus to all parties involved since there'd be smaller numbers in the classroom. It's a very big ask, a very big, um, thing to bring up now, but after the months we've been going through, I thought it was worth mentioning. And it's been a dynamic school year already, so. I guess that's about all I have. Oh, yeah. The last thing I would say is I, for one, would be willing to be a room parent for my kids' classes and put a log together for other ones to be the parent that figured, helps figure out the audio/video needs for that particular classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jesse.
Hello, um, I like the proposal from the parent who just spoke before me. You know, I really understand the need for children to get back into the classroom. However, where we are today in this pandemic, um, with this holiday surge that we, you know, we are kind of in the middle of, we, it's far worse than where we were in March twenty twenty when the school shut down. Is there any reason why the board will not go back and recreate a new plan that really ensures that teachers, students and staff will be safe when, um, we do reopen? You know, there's not enough testing right now. The vaccine is just now starting to get out. How do we really know that once we bring folks back on campus? Right now, I understand it's a smaller hub, but you'll have more people on campus. How do we know that they're, they will be safe? Also, if the county goes back into the red tier in the middle of a quarter, will the district wait until the end of the quarter before they bring the students back in person?
Is that the end of your statement? I guess so. Thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate that and your input.
Sorry, we now have Norman Hurst.
Norman. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi.
We can. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm Norman Hurst. I'm a family doctor at UCSF and the father of two boys attending our district schools. Uh, I'd like to thank the board, administration, teachers and staff for your hard work preparing to reopen in-person instruction. I don't know what's going on behind the scenes, but as a parent, it feels like everyone's pulling together on this and I take great comfort from that. I don't have a crystal ball and don't know when the public health authorities will give us the green light to go ahead. There's some signs at this latest wave, maybe crest. Of course, we all hope so. The main thing I want to say today is let's not guess, re, second guess our public health authorities and professionals when they give us the go-ahead. It's not an easy job they do. And you know what? They haven't been doing such a bad job. Much better here in the Bay Area than many other places. And they've certainly shown an abundance of caution. One more reason we're all lucky to live in the Bay Area. We may get that green light sooner than people are expecting. Why? Because we should. We have more and more and more evidence piling up that opening schools has no measurable impact on the spread of COVID. With the best intentions, we've been hesitant to reopen before we knew better. As it is, we are doing our students great harm and it is having zero impact on the epidemic for us to be waiting as long as we are to reopen schools, knowing as we do now how to do this in a safe way. The CDC just released today, a major national study on this. They conclude, and I quote, "CDC recommends that K to twelve schools be the last settings to close down after all other mitigation measures have been employed and the first to reopen when they can do so." I therefore am concerned, uh, when I hear the presentations today and, and there seems to be a, a, a supposition that we can't open until we're in red tier for two weeks as if that were one of the ten commandments or in the constitution or something. It's not clear to me whether this comes from our health authorities, our district decision, an agreement with the unions, but wherever it comes from, we need to be flexible and constantly re-evaluate as we learn more. It could be that we'll be able to open when we move from deep purple to purple, as CDC would recommend, one of the first things to reopen. Or right away when we go to red instead of waiting two weeks. Let's let our public health authorities make the call and not drag our feet when we get the chance. Uh, the parents who wish not to send their kids to school have that option. Many of us want our kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Norman.
Sorry, we now have Rosebel Chang.
Rosebel, welcome. Rosebel, excuse me.
Hi, I'm Rosebel. Um, thank you all. Uh, Happy New Year to all. I've spoken up at a few board meetings and I would, um, just thank all of you for your hard work, but I do want to echo the sentiments that I just heard from Mr. Norman Hurst, which is, it is important to stay on focus of reopening our schools. We're an education entity. We are not a public health entity. We take our direction from public health and our job should be to educate our children. There have been countless measures that basically say it is not about the teachers not working hard because they are, but it is that virtual schooling is not effective. There is no data that is showing that virtual schooling comes anywhere close to effective as in-person schooling. So while I understand that the February first date must be pushed out, if it must be two weeks in the red tier, and I second the question of why it must be two weeks. But if that is the case, my question for the board is, what is the next date? And I think it is actually really important then to put a date to March two, because I think not having dates, it's like we don't have a common target to, to, to be focused on. So if it is two weeks, is it then that immediately it becomes, our date is February fifteenth? And I am going to push for some clarity on that because this is my wondering. What if we have a board meeting and the next day we move into red? But our next board meeting isn't until thirteen days after that. So does that mean that we have thirteen days of being in red and then two more weeks after that board meeting? So effectively, we've been delayed for four weeks. I would ask this board to be very, very concrete about what it means for reopening dates. What happens when we get that red tier? Exactly what does that mean in terms of our ability to go back? And I think that I would ask the board to let's not spend time revisiting all the discussions we have had in the last two or three months around risk. Because once again, no action in life is without risk. It is always a cost-benefit trade-off. Nobody can guarantee us that any of our actions come with zero risks. And I don't think that's the right question we should be asking. Living without risk means we should all put ourselves in a little bubble and hope that nothing ever happens to us. And I don't think that is what any of us would want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rosebel.
President Howard, we have three more speakers, Neta, Justin Kemp and Michelle. And I will bring on Neta.
Thank you.
Yes, hello. Hi. Okay, great. Um, I wanted to say that I agree with, um, the first two parents that spoke, um, Jesse Bick and the woman who spoke after him. I really appreciate seeing how the district and the teachers and the board are working so well together to come up with a plan. It really, um, brings us as a family a lot of relief to know that, um, everything is, is falling into place and in a very safe way. I also really am focused in, in my mind, and I would like to see a lot more detail on, um, when the schools open, how that teaching will commence. I have to agree with Jesse. I really, um, like that plan. I would like to see that the district is talking with other schools that are currently open, private schools to see how they're working. I know that Redwood Christian is doing something very similar to what Jesse recommended, um, which is that the teachers are teaching, um, still digitally, online. And actually, at those schools, the, what, from what I've heard is that the, um, families can choose whether the child learns online or in the classroom, the teacher is using the camera from the computer, just like now. And, and so there are students at home and in class, so the teachers aren't teaching the same thing twice. They're, they're teaching at once. Um, so that's just something, you know, I would really like to know how the district is planning to, to move forward on this, especially if classrooms do get sent into quarantine. That would provide a little bit more continuity of learning and, um, continuity of kind of their daily process. I, I think it would be better for the kids, better for their learning, better for, um, a little bit easier hopefully for the teachers. So, um, that's kind of the information that I'm looking for at this point as well. So hopefully, those are things that we'll be able to hear about. I am really happy to hear about all the safety, um, plans and see everything being put into place. Thank you so much, Superintendent, um, Ahmadi. Thank you so much to each of the board members who've asked so many questions that have been on my mind and given us all a lot of, um, comfort in knowing that you guys care so much about, um, the kids, the families, our community and, um, of course, the teachers. We couldn't do anything without them. I'm always so grateful for all of our teachers and staff, um, who work so hard for our kids every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Neta.
Sorry, I have Justin Kemp that I will bring over.
Thank you, Amy. Welcome, Justin.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the, the opportunity to, to speak. I, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate everything that, all of the work that everyone at the district has put in, Superintendent Amadi, um, all of you on the board. Especially, I wanted to say how much I appreciate the abundance of caution. It was for me reassuring to hear the comment that, you know, reopening in schools is not about the money, it's about safety. I agree. Safety is the all-important thing. And we, we need to, you know, err on, on the side of caution. I understand that, you know, there really isn't a pathway to certainty, to a hundred percent assurance. You know, there's no way to know, you know, whether or not we'll be perfectly safe and that most likely won't happen for years to come. But from, from what I've heard tonight and what I've, you know, heard, you know, all throughout all of this, to me, the go-forward plan seems fairly clear. You know, the, the, um, the understanding that, you know, the, the county needs to be at a certain point before we're willing to take the risk of reopening schools. And I appreciated that outlook. And so I just wanted to, um, share that, that, you know, I appreciate erring on the side of caution and everything that you guys are, are doing.
Thank you, Justin.
And I will bring over Michelle.
Welcome, Michelle.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Michelle Smith and thank you. Um, wanted to thank you all for having this meeting and for opening it up for us to speak. And I agree with most of the parents except for two that were on this call. What I wanted to do is say that I do thank you for being cautious and not opening up, um, you know, in such a hurry. I was really concerned about that, um, from the last meeting. And, um, but, but hearing this one and, uh, when superintendent, you know, talked about us being, of course, in the purple tier and not being so, um, easy to kind of rush into things and just waiting, I guess, until, you know, we do get into the red and then we know you're going to wait two weeks. I can't see you putting a date on that even now because you don't know. You're, you're not a forecaster. So I could see we were waiting until, you know, we do turn into the red and then you clearly said two weeks, you know, from there. Also, my other question that someone had, had mentioned, and I'm hoping that we can get a resolution on this and an answer, is the transition. So if we do, you know, turn, you know, get into the red tier, um, and, um, we're in the middle of a quarter, I'm a little concerned that there's going to be a disruption, you know, um, to the students because we're doing this, you know, transition and it's not the end of the quarter. And I, I do recall on one of the meetings, I believe it was a board meeting, you all said you would, you would wait until the end of a quarter to meet this transition. Um, as some may not want to have the risk, um, of, uh, you know, the children under, what, eighteen or something or sixteen cannot be vaccinated. And so, you know, maybe some have decided that, no, this, this is not worth the risk. Um, and I've heard on this call, you know, one parent just, you know, talking about, you know, the, the children and how, you know, much of a, a risk or whatever this has been for them. You know, children are, they're, um, you know, what I want to say, they're, I, I don't know, I had the word now, I'm, I'm kind of resilient. That's what they are. They're resilient. They've been doing phenomenal in my opinion, you know, with this. And the teachers have done a great job. It's been, I, I wasn't sure going into this how it was going to be, but it's been, um, the teachers have done a really good job, you know, with the materials that they've had, the technology, everything. So I, I just feel like really at this point, the risk is the safety of our kids. So that's more important than anything else. They're resilient. Again, they can make up, you know, anything that you're seeing that they're lacking right now. You know, the parents just have to come in and, you know, give them that social and emotional, you know, guidance that they need as well. Um, and another thing in closing, uh, you know, we've saw examples of people would look on, you know, the internet, do your research. You see, look at LA, they've opened up the schools, you know, with the younger kids. And, um, one out of three kids had COVID. So, you know, I'm concerned not only for my children, but also for our stu, our teachers that are out there. Um, they're older and so we just gotta, you know, just bear this for a minute and just, but that's it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle. Amy, where are we in this?
Sorry, we just received our last hand, which is Trevor O.
Great. Trevor, we'll welcome you and then we'll move on to other business. We are holding these at thirty minutes as, uh, is indicated earlier in the meeting. So Trevor, uh, welcome to the meeting.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, first of all, I just wanted to say to thank you to everybody on the board for your hard work and our reopening plans and keeping staff and students in Castro Valley safe. I really appreciate it. Superintendent Amadi, I really appreciate your efforts in keeping, uh, staff safe and keep coming up with an opening plan. Just addressing a few of the things. Just addressing a few of the things that I heard tonight and some general concerns, you know. It really concerns me, the number of community members. I am a teacher in our district. And it concerns me, the number of community members that keep referring to teachers as a risk we might have to take. And saying there's risk in every situation. It's it's frankly hurtful as an educator to be referred to as a necessary casualty in a situation like this. But I appreciate the efforts I've seen from the board and from Superintendent Amati for your efforts in keeping staff and students safe. I also really want to appreciate Trustee Theodore. She has been so wonderful in her support of safety. We constantly hear that we should stop second guessing officials. However, I do know that Trustee Theodore has a master's in public health and works for the Department of Health, so she is part of our officials, and I trust her deeply and her recommendations to the board and her contributions. I wanted to also address the concern of teaching both virtually and simultaneously to home and to students live in the classroom. I can say that it is a incredible challenge now just to teach to students virtually online and that we will be doing a disservice to either the students at home or the students in the classroom by doing a hybrid model like that. It's just not sustainable. And I know that Superintendent Amati has mentioned before that that's not something that's really on the radar because of the incredible challenges that come with monitoring students and things like the student chat that runs live during classes with limited controls and connection issues. To have a teacher tethered to a computer, just because the students are directly in front of them in the classroom, doesn't mean the learning is going to be better. It just means they're in a different environment. With all that being said, I just really appreciate all of your work and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. And thanks to all of you for your comments tonight. Would like to remind everybody that our plan is on the website and there's an awful lot of information in that plan. I think it's about 60 some pages. And in addition to that, there is also a plan for each individual school site for when we do come back. And I think it'd be good for to, I'm going to ask Parveen to comment on the two week waiting period. I think there's some confusion around that. It's my understanding that that is a requirement of the Alameda County Public Health Department. That's not our decision. That's the public health officials and epidemiologists in Alameda County. So we are following their direction exactly. Is that correct, Parveen? You're muted. There you go.
Okay, um, yes, you're absolutely correct. The reason we say two weeks is because Alameda County will allow schools to open only after we have been in red for two weeks. So we cannot open before then. It's not kind of something that we came up with. It is the requirement from the county. And I have to say, I, you know, a lot of people thank her for a lot of this work. I do want to thank Alameda County Public Health. Dr. Moss and his team have been amazing, very approachable, just very cautious. And the other thing I wanted to say that it came up, I I think a couple of folks asked about switching at the end of a quarter. First of all, we're only right now talking about elementary. That's what has to happen first. And then when we talked about at the quarters end, that was for secondary. Elementary students are actually on a trimester system, so there is no quarter for them. So that's why we didn't, we don't talk about quarters for for the for the students, obviously. You know, once Alameda County says we're in red, we've been in red for two weeks, we're going to keep communicating with you through your principals. They're going to be sending you information about when, where, practices, all of those things. I I want to say, I actually heard a couple of times from people like, why are they sending all this information out? We're not, I'm like, I rather have people work ahead of time and get all of this in because it really is a lot to make sure we have in place. And I don't want us to miss a beat. So you'll get lots of information.
You know, one other thing that I want to say here is that you are certainly in almost daily contact with the public health authorities in Alameda County.
We are.
And in fact, the Alameda County Public Health has been holding monthly meetings for school board members where we get to talk directly to Dr. Moss and the others. And I believe you are also in contact with a working group at UCSF. You might want to mention that a little bit, too.
Yeah, and UCSF has, in in fact, the doctor, I couldn't remember her name, you probably remember. She is the person that that Governor Newsom has overseeing all of this. If we get her name, one of you might know, but she and three, four other doctors have done five sessions on COVID and they do an amazing job. So we watch all of that. We also have every single week, we have a superintendent meeting at the state and they always bring doctors to that meeting and different different people. We just get a lot of information. I also want to say, I want to thank our nurses because they're in direct contact with the county. They're getting training all the time and they're in communication on it practically on a daily basis. So we're lucky to have our two nurses.
Todd, did you have your hand up? I wasn't, no. Michael.
Sorry, I'm having fun technical difficulties tonight and I'm even at the district office to take advantage of the internet. One observation and one question. Clearly, our actions are a function of that larger commitment of, as a society, trying to deal with communities. We committed to, the previous board committed and I'm supporting the previous board committed to about, you know, just describe the mechanics. Should we find ourselves, you know, within those 14 days of personnel instruction? Will it be a special board meeting? Would you automatically just open based on that information? Just to sort of respond to like how that would, the rolling out of reopening our schools would go.
So that that's a good question. I think I heard you say, like, if if, let's say, when we are in red for two weeks, do we just open? First of all, if we go into red, everybody is going to know it. So we'll keep sending information out. And because we have board meetings every two weeks, it doesn't mean that I'm I'm, my understanding and my hope is that we don't keep having to go back to that and that we know, let's say, we are in red next Monday or or this Friday. I don't think it's going to happen. Let's say it's this Friday. Then we all will know, or it's February 1st, and we all know we have to be in red for two weeks. And we would be sending information out. Obviously, the board members are all aware of it at that point. If we don't have a, somebody mentioned, is it going to be four weeks? I don't believe that we're coming to the board to just say, okay, we're going to open on this day or that day. We won't open, obviously, before two weeks, but it may be a little over two weeks because I think if the two weeks falls, let's say on Friday, that may not work because we have the schedules that we have. So we'll be very thoughtful and keep the board abreast of it and the community. Because AB schedule is easier, but once we get to secondary, it doesn't make sense to open on some days of the week versus another.
Over here, for the most part, for reopen our schools is not a function of convening the board.
The board has, my understanding is the board has the plan in place. It's supposed to be two weeks. And once it's, we get close to that, we'll definitely, we may even have just a short meeting so that we can let you know, this is why we're not going to open on Thursday, we're going to wait till Monday. But it won't be before two weeks at all. And I think that's the, that's the piece I think you want to know, like, you know, Tuesday is probably not the best day to start on Friday. I'm I'm just making it up.
You know, one thing to remember here is we did have a special meeting to close the schools. It was a Friday evening. It was Friday, the 13th last year, March 13th. So I remember it well. So we, special meetings are relatively routine if we need them.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments for Parveen Dodd?
Yeah.
Just a comment that there's nothing about this process that is us or staff or teachers dragging their feet. This is all about safety. I mean, we want nothing more than having kids back in the classroom. So that is where all of our hearts are and doing it safely.
Yes, I I agree. And to trustee Howard's point of, we have had special board meetings. But my understanding is the special board, the special board meeting, although that February, when you said the 13th, Friday, the 13th, reminded me. When we have that special board meeting, it would be to just, for example, say it's this day versus this day instead of rehashing what day and we're not going to open and we're going to open and things like that. So I appreciate that because I think the families need that and stick, you know, continuity and and not going back and forth. And I did hear the comment about teachers doing, you know, the the camera issue and all of that. That is something that some people have brought up. But as you've heard from one of our teachers, it's not an easy task, but we've got a plan and we're going to do our best to support all families. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to item C, which is our Governance Team Policy Handbook. Hope you had all had an opportunity to take a look at that. We worked on this at a workshop about a month or two ago and then last meeting, we had some more changes and now we have the relative, hopefully, the final document. Are there any questions or comments about that document? Lavender.
I just want to say I really appreciate the board's coordination, working on this plan. I think that we've come together for a really great plan that really shows as trustees how we're aligned with our mission, how we're aligned with representing what is important for our kids and our students and aligning what we expect of them. So I just, I really appreciate it and I think it's a really good plan and it's going to really help us work together as a governance team. So thank you.
Mike.
I just wanted to thank the fellow, my fellow trustees and 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 our convening of going through that document. And I know I had quite a few ideas and I, it it really means a lot as someone who's new to this that you all heard me and we were able to integrate some of those ideas and we were all collaboratively able to work together on ways to improve this. So bravo. Thank you, team.
Dolly.
Oh, just very quickly, I, of course, love working with all of you who are fellow board members and I really appreciate the time that we spent on the Governance Handbook. It was a good overview of what it is that we do, how we do it, those kinds of things. So it's a good way to start. And I highly, I I, well, it says right in there that that's what you do with new board members. So, yeah, good, good plan, very good plan.
This is an action item. That's a prompt.
I'll move to approve the board handbook.
Thank you, Lavender.
I'll second.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our Governance Handbook. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. Shane, what's your preferential vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Kuziat.
Yes.
Trustee, Trustee Adams.
Yes.
Vice President Theodore.
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so it's that we have now adopted the handbook on five, a five to zero vote. Thank you very much for all of that. We will move on now to the superintendent's report.
I don't really have any more to say other than it's been busy and thank you for for all your great questions and and emails from parents. I do want to say I am hopeful for our future. And I know that our teachers and staff have done a really wonderful job supporting students in light of everything that has been happening in our country. So thank you. No, no other report.
Thank you. So we'll start on board member reports. I'm sorry, I'm doing this in reverse alphabetical order all tonight. So I'm leaning on you now, trustee Whitaker.
Thank you, Gary. I have only done one thing, but I'm very excited. I am now luckily, thank you all for allowing me to be on the Community Alliance and there is a book reading of the book Cast. And I was very thankful to be able to have a discussion about that book with the community and it was great to see Jo, she was there. I can't remember Teresa's last name, but there was a woman leading named Teresa and along with Parveen. So I'm just really appreciative of the conversation and being able to be part of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kuziat.
I have not done anything official for the board. I I just want to acknowledge and extend my profound empathy for everyone who faces internet connection issues while trying to conduct a meeting. I do look forward to our very important event coming up for Dr. Martin Luther King. I I just think it's fantastic that we are finding community virtually in in a really important. I I I look forward to that next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Trustee Adams.
Oh, hi. Yeah, so I also went to the the Community Alliance Book Club. I guess it's called about the book Cast. I haven't had a chance to read that yet, but it looks like a really very interesting read and I'm looking forward to reading that. Second thing I did is I went to the, let's see, the AAUW American oh, university women, American, I forget, I'm forgetting one of the A is what it's for. Anyway. And these were kind of simultaneously, so I was trying to be at like four meetings at the same time, but I did get a little bit in of this Title IX stuff that the AAUW had because I do want to be a person who advocates for girls' sports and to make sure that there, you know, girls are not in any way treated differently from anybody else that have all the same rights as all people. Okay? And so I wanted to know more about that. And I did learn quite a bit more about that and some people who are also interested in that, where I could find even more information. Secondly, I think I'm going to be signed up for two, like, school board classes coming up in March. So I will learn, you know, course one and course two. So I'll get some of those under my belt. Okay?
Thank you. Vice President Theodore.
Well, I have not represented the board since our last meeting and workshop. It's been kind of a nice break until, of course, the insurrection last week. But tomorrow is the ROP meeting, which I'm looking forward to. I'm really excited to be back on the ROP board. And then next week is the Equity Task Force meeting and it happens to also be my 50th birthday next week.
Oh.
That's it.
Happy birthday in advance. Well, the I, before the Christmas holiday, Parveen and I attended the Marshall PTA meeting and heard from the principal and the folks over there and had a good meeting with them. It's always fun to be at Marshall. Even if it's virtual. And I will mention two things that the Rotary has been up to because they have applications to the schools. Last week, we had a talk by Rafael Palaeo, who's a physician at Stanford, and he talked about sleep and its importance for students. And it was a quite an interesting presentation. He made the analogy to food. We don't tell our students we're putting them on a diet during the week and you can pig out and make up for it on the weekends, but we sort of do that with sleep. So an interesting talk by him on the importance of sleep in students. I'm also happy to say that Rotary is joining in a, an effort with the Castro Valley Educational Foundation on a presentation. On February 16th, we have John Perkins, who's a physicist at Lawrence Livermore to talk. And he'll, he's part of the laser fusion group there to try to harness fusion as an energy source for us all. So there'll be more information coming out about that, but I think that'll be a really good talk. He's a very He's a very interesting guy. And I do want to mention also, you brought up the book club for the Community Alliance. We actually have a Community Alliance meeting coming up in the, I think in a day or two, isn't it? It's tomorrow.
Yes, I was gonna, I was gonna make a couple.
Okay, you're gonna make a couple of announcements. I think it'd be great for everybody to attend that meeting. This is one where we have as many board members who want to, to attend that. It's open. So that's all I have. Parveen, you said you wanted to make a couple of announcements.
Just a couple of announcements. Community Alliance meeting is tomorrow, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. And we have sent information out, and then Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebration on Monday from 11 to 12:30. I do want to thank Dr. Ryman for working really hard and with Ms. Rogers and a couple of other of our administrators, putting that together. We're going to have student speeches and everything. So it's going to be wonderful. I also want to say, since a couple of our board members are signing up for the Masters in Governance, and I think the ones in the afternoons go to 5 o'clock. And a couple of times, those times, we would start open session at like 5:30 so they have a half an hour to eat something before we start. So, but, but we'll let you know when.
Yeah. Well, those are good courses and they're, they're very good for beginning board members. So I'm glad you're signed up and everything. So I think that's it for tonight. Thanks to everybody who was watching in. Thanks for all the comments. Particular thanks to the staff and to Amy for helping out to make the meeting work as well as it did. And look forward to seeing all of you at our next meeting. Thank you and good night.